This conference will now be recorded.
All right, in the last session, we were talking about basic fundamentals related to a company or a company code or an organization which we need to take in order to do our practice wherein we understood few points here. We understood the name of the company, we also understood the products or the services that the company is dealing with. This I want everybody to have at least one basic understanding, one basic exercise so that you will feel comfortable, confident on name of companies along with their products and services. This is your point number one which is mandatory before you start understanding what is SAP FICO, how we need to do our practice. Okay, now what we will do is we will try to understand types of configurations. Let us say types of configurations. When SAP FICO, whatever we represent, we are representing from the SAP FICO point of view, do not think, do not understand anything in a generic way. Overall SAP point of view, please relate it to the SAP FICO separately so that when you are talking to somebody, when you are understanding, you know that this is something which is applicable for a FICO consultant, you will be a FICO consultant going forward. So think from the FICO point of view first, only once you feel yes, now I am comfortable from the FICO point of view, then only think in a generic way from SAP point of view, but at beginning let it be related to SAP FICO specifically. No generalized understanding, no generalized looking at, look at or understand it from SAP FICO exclusively. Two types of configurations, one is here baseline configuration. Second one is here business process configuration. Whenever you are talking about configuration, do not think everything is a configuration. Within the configuration in any project, as a consultant, you need to always represent baseline and then the business process. When you are talking about baseline, there are certain things which are part of it. When you are talking about business process, there are certain things which are part of it. You should be in a position to understand what configuration is baseline, what configuration is business process. In order to start your practice in SAP FICO, you need to make, you need to maintain some settings, some configuration which is usually called as baseline configuration. In the other words, everybody must be aware of two points called enterprise structure, enterprise structure, your global settings or your organization structure. Others please go unmute everyone. Or your organization structure. Enterprise structure, global settings or organization structure, these kind of terms are basically used in generic way, they are all part of your baseline configuration. Tomorrow when you are talking to somebody, when you are explaining it to somebody or when you are in any project, do not use these terms called enterprise structure setting, global setting, org structure, org structure setting, definition setting, assignment setting, these terms you should not use it. Instead use a single term called baseline configuration because this is how you will be using or anybody else will be using in the project, you also should understand in the similar way. All your basic settings are part of baseline configuration, basic settings in terms of enterprise structure, global parameters, global setting, org structure, definition, assignment, all these kind of terms are combined together as baseline configuration. And after that, when you are talking about business process configuration, you need to split each business process into multiple functionalities. You need to split business process into multiple functionalities called as GL, general ledger, AP, AR, cash, bank, taxes, assets, integrations, some kind of let us say validations etc. Like this, everything is part of your business process config. When you are talking about business process related to GL, you need to understand what is the business process for it. When you are looking at what is the business process, what kind of master they are creating? Do they need any controls in it? What kind of reports are extracting? Any customization, any additions needed toward? Everything you need to look at it. Similarly, when you are looking at AP point of view. How their vendors are categorized, how invoices are being processed, how credit memos are processed, how reports are generated, how payments are made, how taxes are calculated? Like this, everything you need to separate based on the business process. Within the business process, again there may be different kind of scenarios, every scenario you need to understand. According to the business scenario, according to the client requirement, you need to make sure settings or configuration is made. In short, these business process configuration is specifically client specific. In every business, in every organization, in every company, there are changes in every process. Meaning company to company, product to product, process to process, there are variations, there are changes. These changes, these variations you need to understand from business point of view because these are subjected to change from business to business. Understand from your business point of view, in short, your client business point of view and then accordingly make the appropriate relevant settings here. That is your business process configuration, here you have to be very, very careful. Baseline configuration is a simple straightforward, for all the companies, for all the clients, settings will remain the same. Just names are getting changed, meaning these are common setting. Baseline configuration is a common setting, these common setting you need to understand in line with your client business and then business process you need to understand with respect to their organization, with respect to their business process. Meaning how they are operating, what is their requirement, all these things will come into picture as part of your business process config. First thing, let us try to understand baseline configuration. We will try to understand baseline configuration. As part of baseline configuration, what settings are there? There are some settings as according to SAP which are mandatory to begin your company code setup in SAP to start setting up SAP for your organization, these baseline configuration is mandatory. It is your activity, your responsibility to begin the system configuration from the FICO point of view. Meaning any client or any organization using SAP, first configuration is always maintained by SAP FICO consultant. In any project, first configuration is always from your side as a FICO consultant because everybody is dependent on your configuration. You take any model, SAP CO, SAP MM, SAP ST, SAP PP, QM, QS, PS, everybody. Every consultant is dependent on your configuration called as your baseline configuration is the starting point for all other module consultants. Reason, in SAP, everybody is aware, everything is based on company code. In SAP, all the modules are working based on a company code. Company code is something which is created by FICO consultant. If you are not creating your company code and all these and other settings, other module consultant cannot work. Meaning all other consultants are dependent on your initial configuration called as your baseline config. You cannot wait, okay, my configuration is not completed and all. You need to understand as a FICO consultant, you will have two TRs first. When I say you will have two TRs, one TR for the baseline configuration, another TR for business process config. Meaning here you are going to maintain all the settings which are applicable related to your company as part of their business organization structure or SAP organization structure. Once this is done, send an email to total consulting team. Meaning for every project, there is a common email ID. For every project, there is a common email ID, in that project, all the consultant's email ID is included. So you send an email to your project common email ID that a dear team or dear all, baseline configuration from SAP FICO point of view is completed, please find the company code below. You put company code whatever you created, send out an email to everybody so that everybody is aware yes, baseline configuration is now completed from FICO point of view, then they will start their configuration or their work in SAP. Otherwise what will happen, you are thinking that okay, my work I will do leisurely peacefully, then all other module consultants cannot start their work as their work is dependent on you. As their work is dependent on you, they cannot start their work. They will start raising complaints stating we are unable to start our work because FICO baseline is not completed. Because company code is not set up, because these errors are coming, we are not able to move forward. Why? Because other consultants, their configuration is based on your baseline FICO configuration. These things when you keep in your mind, you understand okay, if I don't do baseline configuration quickly, other consultants cannot start their work. When you know the dependencies, you will understand why you need to do, why you need to call it as baseline config. It is not for the sake of baseline config, it has got lot of dependencies, lot of connecting points from a project point of view which we will understand once we start actual configuration in the system. Now as part of this baseline configuration, there are some settings which we need to define. Let us understand what are those settings which we need to understand. Before we understand what is this setting all about, first you should know the setting name. We will try to list out the settings name and then we will understand. Later on, we will discuss about each and every setting, what it is, why we do it and how you will do it. So first one, let me write. Define company. Okay, and then next one, define company code. Define company, define company code and then assign company to company code. These three settings will be represented as point number one, this is your first setting. Don't think about the T code and all at this moment, you just try to remember these three one-liners, that is enough. As part of your baseline configuration, first point is to define a company, define a company code and then assign company code to company. These three points are part of first setting or first set. Similarly, you have second one called define chart of accounts. Similarly, assign chart of accounts to company code. Third one, define account groups, let it be very specific, define GL account groups and then define retained earnings GL account. This is your second set. In short, this is second set is all about chart of account. Okay, first set is all about company, company code, second set is all about chart of account. And then you need third set. In the third set, you will be defining fiscal year variant. Similarly, you will be assigning fiscal year variant to company code. You need to define a fiscal year variant and then you need to assign fiscal year variant to company code, this is one setting. In short, this is another set. Next, fourth one is here, define posting period variant and then assign posting period variant to company code. This is another setting and this there is one more setting, third one. Define open and close periods. Define open and close period is the last step. And next one, fifth one, you need to define field status variant. Define field status variant and then assign field status variant to company code. This is another setting, meaning this is set number five. Now, set number six will be define GL tolerance groups. Similarly, define customer vendor tolerance groups. Last one, define user tolerance groups. This is another set. This is our sixth set. And seventh set will be define document splitting settings. Okay, seventh set will be document splitting settings. And eighth set will be define tax procedure and then assign tax procedure to country. You will have to define a tax procedure and then you will have to assign the tax procedure to country. Next one. Define leading and non-leading ledgers. Next one, you need to define leading ledger at the same time, non-leading ledger. Next one, you need to also define accounting principles. After defining leading ledger, non-leading ledger, we also need to make sure we will be defining accounting principle. Once accounting principle is also defined, we need to define controlling area and this controlling area we need to assign assign controlling area to company code. Point number twelve, you need to define profit center activation settings. Profit center activation settings are required and then let us say define COFI integration settings. COFI integration settings are required and then next one, you need perform baseline consistency check. Okay, these are the important and mandatory baseline configuration in any project, in any organization, in any country for any company in SAP. Whenever you are talking about SAP FICO configuration, as a FICO consultant, as per you, this is nothing but baseline configuration. These fourteen set or these fourteen configurations become mandatory for every organization in every country. No matter where you are configuring, whether you are configuring in your practice environment or you are configuring in a real environment in any project, these settings will remain the same. These settings whatever we are talking, representing is with respect to S4 HANA system. One or two settings may not be applicable if you are configuring in ECC system but since nobody is going to do any configuration in ECC system if you become a consultant, that option is ruled out. You are not going to maintain these settings called company, company code, chart of account. In any ECC system, that option is now ruled out. When I say that option is now ruled out, please make sure you are going to understand, you are going to relate everything with respect to S4 HANA system as all the projects in the market now related to S4 HANA. Okay, any project that you join currently will be S4 HANA system majoritively. In case if you are joining any ECC project, it is strictly a support project. ECC is applicable until 2027 as per official SAP confirmation. After 2027, SAP will discontinue providing the support for SAP ECC. Already SAP is not selling any licenses to SAP ECC. Anybody who wants to buy SAP, anybody who wants to use SAP now will have to go for SAP S4 HANA only. So don't think about SAP ECC configuration and all, do not think about ECC configuration. When you are talking about S4 HANA configuration, all your ECC configuration is by default covered. In case if there is any change between ECC to S4 HANA system, I will explain the changes are applicable here. What are those changes, I will show you practically. In short, when I am not talking about anything related to ECC, assume that it is same in ECC and in S4 HANA system. If there is any change, I will specifically talk, I will specifically write, I will specifically discuss about the changes. If I am not talking about anything related to ECC, assume that this is the same in ECC in S4 HANA system. If I am not talking about any changes, assume that it is the same in ECC and in S4 HANA system. There are only few changes. Again, when you are talking about ECC to S4 HANA changes, don't look at from SAP point of view. When I say don't look at it from SAP point of view, if you look at it from SAP point of view, there are so many changes. Technically, there are lot of changes called, they say that it is third-party database, here it is S4 HANA database, that it is outside memory, here it is inbuilt memory, it is very fast, row-based, columnar-based, CDS views, different points will come into picture. Different points will come into picture which are majoritively related to technological changes, architectural changes from SAP point of view. But you are not talking from SAP point of view, you should first talk from FICO point of view. Always make sure you will be first talking from the FICO point of view. From the SAP FICO point of view, what are the changes? You understand these points first, once you are clear with these point, only then talk about SAP changes as a whole. Otherwise, please make sure you understand differences, changes between ECC and S4 HANA system from FICO point of view first, not in a generic way. Reason, tomorrow when somebody is asking you to talk or explain about ECC to S4 HANA changes, nobody is expecting you to tell the general changes. Everybody is expecting you to tell FICO changes, FICO changes with respect to business process. When I say how GL account is created in ECC, how GL account is created in S4 HANA system, how banks are created in ECC, how banks are created in S4 HANA system, how your customer vendor is created in ECC, how your customer vendor is created in S4 HANA system, likewise you need to understand some changes. These changes is what somebody wants to hear from you in your interview or when anybody is asking anywhere. But other than this, don't tell this is inbuilt memory, in-house, this kind of thing, all this kind of X, Y, Z, don't tell because they are not straight away changes in ECC or in S4 HANA with respect to FICO. These are overall SAP related changes. These are overall SAP related changes, these overall SAP related changes you talk only after talking FICO changes. You are a FICO consultant, please make sure you limit, you limit your explanation towards FICO first to avoid unnecessary confusion, unnecessary controversies. Anywhere in your interview to your friend, to anybody, tell the changes related to FICO first. In short, you understand changes from your module first, then only you to go to other module or look at from a product point of view overall. So in short, these fourteen steps are mandatory for any company code setup, for any practice in your organ, in your company. In your company in this sense while practicing, while you run a project. If you notice it in every setting, majoritively, there is a term called company code. Majoritively, there is a term called company code in every setting. Setting number one or first set contains company code, second set contains company code, third set contains company code, fourth set contains company code, fifth set contains company code, sixth set, I have not written company code in it, but this also contains company code. Sixth set also contains company code. Seventh set does not contain any company code because it is a common setting applicable for all the company codes. Indirectly, this is also related to company code. Next one, tax procedure does not contain any company code but indirectly this is also related to your company code by way of country. Ledgers are also connected to your company code, accounting principle is not connected to your company code directly but connected in to your company code in an indirect way. Controlling area is also connected to company code, profit center is also connected to company code, COFI integration is not related to company code, is common for all the company codes. Last one is your consistency check. Now this consistency check is nothing but, in ECC, you can define all your configurations, then you can start working on system in ECC system. But in S4 HANA system, it is not like that. The way you do the settings in ECC, start posting the entries or any other thing in ECC, it is not the same way in S4 HANA system. In S4 HANA, before you post any accounting entry in your company code, you need to make sure your company code, you need to make sure your company code passes the consistency check. This consistency check is SAP standard, any company code that you define, you need to make sure you will perform the system consistency check pre-defined functionality in S4 HANA system. When you go to the consistency check screen, when you put your company code, when you click on execute, make sure system will give a message stating check passed. It will give a result called pass fail. If your company code passes the consistency check, your company code is ready for document posting or data entry. Meaning you can record debit, credit accounting entry only if your company code passes consistency check related to only if your Company Code passes consistency check related to baseline configuration. If your Company Code is not passing the consistency check, you cannot create any accounting entry in the Company Code. Right, this is one advantage, when you are practicing, you can go and verify whether your settings are defined properly or not. Because you do not need to get errors, you do not need to struggle while posting the entries or any other area. Straight away after defining all these thirteen steps, in the fourteenth step, go to system consistency check, pass your Company Code, click on execute, it will tell if all your settings are done along with the proper sequence along with all the parameters, it will tell consistency check passed. If any, if any inconsistency is there, if any problem is there, it will tell consistency check failed. Okay, we need to make sure these points you are able to understand, these points you are not getting any kind of confusion here. Alright? Now, if we go up, if we go, these are all part of your baseline configuration. Everywhere you are able to see a term called Company Code. Everywhere you are able to see a term called Company Code. If you scroll up, yesterday or in the last session, we were talking about various company names. In the other session, we were talking about various company code, for example, you talked about Demart you understood, you are selling, or the business product or service is grocery. Kinlay is water, Carlon is mattress, Kia is related to car, TVS is related to bike, MRF is related to tire, Titan is related to watch, something like this, we were talking in the last session. Like this, you need to take anyone company. Tomorrow, when you tell that I am working for three projects, I did four project, I am doing implementation, I am doing rollout, I am doing support, I am doing upgradation, I am doing migration whatsoever. You are talking about a project, project is always referring to client. As a consultant, you will be working in a project, project is always referring to a client, meaning you may be telling that I am working for Britannia project, I am working for Britannia project or Britannia client. I am working for Philips project or Philips client, I am working for HP project or HP client. I am working for, let us say Titan project or Titan client. Similarly, I am working for Raymond project or Raymond client. We are implementing for Ultratec Cement, we are doing a rollout for Bata. Okay? I am providing support for Tata Steel or I am providing, we are working for Honda, Honda client, we are working for Zomato, like this, it can be any client who is using SAP. You will call some company, any organization as a client when they start using SAP. Okay, the company whoever is using SAP application will become a client. Okay, and then if you are doing any kind of work to them, you will do any work as part of a project. You will do any work to any client by way of a project. Your project can be implementation project, rollout project, support project, upgradation project or migration project. In any ways, your client name will remain the same. In any ways, your client name will remain the same, do not have any kind of confusion here. Project is represented with a different, different terminology called end-to-end implementation. Nobody calls it as implementation, everybody calls it as end-to-end implementation. When you talk to anybody, when you talk to anybody, nobody will tell implementation from the organization point of view, especially from a job point of view. When you are looking for any job, when you are putting your resume in the portal, when you receive any call from any HR, they specifically want you to use a term called end-to-end implementation. If you tell implementation, they are not okay with that, they want you to confirm again, is it end-to-end implementation? Though you are telling I did one implementation project, they will put immediate cross question, is it end-to-end implementation? Reason, most of the people will have a confusion between implementation and then rollout. Rollout is different, implementation is different, that is the reason to avoid confusion. In place of implementation, replace always with end-to-end implementation. Especially when you are in the interview and all, do not use a term called implementation. Always use a term called end-to-end implementation because, no surprise, because you are using implementation in place of end-to-end implementation, your HR recruiter may get a negative opinion. Because they feel that as an experienced consultant, you should be knowing it is not called as implementation, you should call as end-to-end implementation. When you are talking to somebody who is related to SAP consultant, it is okay there. There you can talk implementation because your other SAP consultant will understand your intention. But a recruiter, a HR, anybody who is not from SAP consulting background may not be able to understand. They will understand only if you use end-to-end implementation. Make sure these minor points will create a problem to you tomorrow. These minor, minor points will create a problem if you are not taking care right from the beginning. Alright, so you may be working in the implementation project, support project, rollout project, upgradation project or migration project, anything is possible, but everything is dependent on the company project that you are working for. And when you are working for a project, always tell you are working for a single project only, do not tell at a time I am working for two projects, three projects, I am supporting three clients, two clients. Do not tell in your interviews, tell within the organization it is fine. Within the organization it is fine, but when you are in the interview, it is strictly recommended, do not tell two-three client names at a time. When I say do not tell two-three client names at a time, I am representing two types of consulting work here. One is a dedicated consulting work, another one is a shared consulting work. Dedicated consulting work means you are working for single project, single client, full day. Meaning, I am now officially tagged to Apple project, just assume that I am now officially tagged to Apple project. Now, every day I am providing my consulting services to Apple or Apple implementation, Apple rollout, Apple support, anything. I am working for Apple client, I will be representing that I am a dedicated resource or I am a dedicated consultant for Apple, I am dedicatedly working for Apple project. On the other side, it is also possible that I am working for Kia project. Okay, I am also working for TVS project, I am also working for, let us say MRF project. Let us say, I am working for Kia project, I am working for TVS project, I am also working for MRF project. This situation is also possible in the real environment, but especially in this support project. These things are also possible, but especially in this support project. As per this support project, what will happen? Some companies, some companies will be providing shared support. Shared support in this sense, you are working in a support project, but you are not a dedicated consultant for Kia or TVS or MRF. You will be receiving the support tickets, you will have to extend your support for Kia project, TVS project, MRF project, wherever work is there, you need to pitch in and then complete the work. Tickets, issues whatsoever, here you are representing that you are providing consulting services or you are working for three projects at a time. You are working for three projects at a time, in these kind of situations, in your interviews especially, do not tell I am parallelly supporting Kia, TVS, MRF, these points you should not tell, you should tell only one client. If you tell three clients, they will understand you do not know anything. Because you either know the Kia business process or TVS business process, MRF. You may be thinking that if I tell three projects at a time, they will have a very positive opinion, it is not that. They will have a negative opinion if you tell. When I say they will have a negative opinion, they say that how you are doing all this kind of thing, they will put lot of unnecessary questions for which you may not be able to answer at your stage. So, it is always recommended you tell a single project at a time or single client at a time. Your project, your client is nothing but like this company names. Your project or your client is nothing but company names like this. And these company names, these client names are basically your company names, your company code names in SAP. In SAP, your starting point, in SAP, your starting point is Company Company Code. In SAP, starting point is Company and Company Code. This company, this company code is always name of a company or name of a client who is using SAP. Name of a company or name of an organization who is using SAP will become a company and a company code in SAP. For example, if Philips is using SAP, company is Philips, company code is also Philips. Company is Philips, company code is also Philips. If Toshiba is using SAP, company is Toshiba, company code is also Toshiba. If Lenovo is using SAP, Lenovo is company, Lenovo is company code also. Similarly, if Demart is using SAP, Demart will be my company, Demart will be my company code. Likewise, if Apple is using, Apple is my company, Apple is my company code. In that example, in that manner, you relate it with any company. You relate it with any client, any name, same thing, same name will become company. At the same time, company code, do not think company is separate, company code is separate, this is the old fashion. Company is a separate, company code is a separate, is the old fashion. The new fashion, new trend, current situation is company, company code both are same. They are not different. Company, company code both are same, strictly same, hundred percent these two are supposed to be same. When you tell to anybody no deviation here. When I say when you tell no deviation here, you are talking about ten company names or ten client names, ten project. Talking about ten client names, ten company names, ten project, you are representing ten companies in SAP, ten company codes in SAP, whether they are from the same organization or from a different organization, it is immaterial. In short, if I try to put one word, let us say Company and then Company Code. What I will do is for example I will write Apple, I will write Lenovo, I will write, let us say Samsung, I will write Sony, I will write Acer, I will write HP. Let us say these are all the company names that I am representing here. If I am working for Apple project, if I am defining Apple into SAP, I need to make sure I will create company, I will create company code. I will create company, I will create company code because if you look at the first setting here. If you look at the first setting, it is your company, company code and then assignment of company code to company. Right, these two are to be created separately and these two are to be connected with another setting called assignment. Your total configuration begins from here. If I am talking about it, my company becomes Apple. Okay, Apple becomes my company, company code is also Apple. Company becomes Apple, company code also Apple. If I am talking about Lenovo, this will become Lenovo, company code also becomes Lenovo. If I am talking about Samsung, Samsung becomes my company, Samsung becomes my company code. If I am talking about Sony, Sony becomes my company, Sony becomes my company code also. Okay, same Sony will become my company, Sony will also become my company code. Next thing, if I am talking about Acer, Acer becomes my company, at the same time, Acer becomes my company code. On the other side, when I am talking about HP, HP becomes my company, HP also becomes my company code. This is your base initial level understanding before you start configuring SAP. Your company, your company code will remain the same. Your company, your company code will remain the same, now the same point I am going to add it in a different way. Same things, I will add it in a different way, for example, I will take Apple only again. Again, I will put these two points. Okay, here I will put Apple India and here I will put Apple USA, here I will put Apple Singapore, here I will put Apple Dubai, here I will put, Apple China likewise. Even in this situation, it is the same, even though everything is part of Apple. Even though everything is part of Apple, I am going to write my company as Apple India, my company code also as Apple India here. Here I am writing my company as Apple India and then my company code also Apple India. In this case, Apple USA, my company will be Apple USA, my company code will be Apple USA. Apple Singapore, my company will be Apple Singapore, my company code will be Apple Singapore. Apple Dubai, same thing, my company is Apple Dubai, my company code is Apple Dubai. Apple China, same logic, my company is Apple China, my company code is also Apple China in case, in any situation. When I am talking about different, different companies together or when I am talking about same company, different locations together. In any ways, I am not creating one company anywhere, I am creating separate, separate company, here it is not one company for all. This is okay because these are all different companies. But in this situation, even though everything is Apple, still I am not creating one company because we do not do it. Even though you have different, different locations here of same Apple, still you are not creating same company because in any project you will not do it. When you know in any project you will not do it, even when you are practicing it, even when you look at it for the first time, make sure if your understanding is incorrect, you will correct it at this moment. Do not think that for all this, Apple will be one company, Apple India, Apple USA, everything will be separate. That is also correct, but in the olden days, now we do not do it, we do not follow it, no consultant follows it. When something which is not followed in the project, you please do not follow it. Tomorrow when you tell to somebody, I create same company called Apple everywhere and then I created separate company codes, one company is assigned to multiple company codes, we do not do it in any project. At this moment, currently we do not do that approach, that logic. Please, when you are talking to somebody, when you are explaining to somebody, you talk in the similar way. Company and a company code, let us say, there are two points here. Company and company code relationship. Company and company code relationship. Option number one. Option number two. This is one too many. Another one is one to one. Meaning here it is one company and many company codes. Option number one is indicating one company and many company codes or multiple company codes, instead of many, let me write multiple company codes. Option number two. It is one company and one company code. Okay? This is one is two N. This is your one is two one. This is one is two one. This option is currently not used. This, this option is not used, this option is used. We will not be using option number one, instead we will be using option number two. When we start configuring the system, I will explain practically why all this. But before we start, I need to make sure you will understand these points, these one-liners. Because these one-liners, if you are not clear, if you are not understanding, many confusions will come in your mind. Many confusions will come in your mind if these small, small points are not taken care at this moment. You need to take care of these. You need to take care of these small, small one-liners right from the beginning. So that there is no point of you getting unnecessary confusion because of this confusion, you may not be able to understand. Okay, this point we need to understand, next thing, you need to understand. Configuration levels. Next point, configuration level, there are three levels, one is here. Client level. Configuration. Or setting. Setting is nothing but configuration, but you are not supposed to maintain or you are not supposed to use a term called setting. Always replace configuration term in place of setting. Second point is here. Country level. Configuration. Or setting. Third one is here. Company code level. Configuration. Or setting. So these three points, you need to understand whenever you are talking about any configuration, please make sure you are clear with these terminologies. Reason, if these are not clear, we may get unnecessary confusion. Tomorrow, in your interview, people will definitely ask these kind of questions. At what level you maintain this? At what level this configuration is maintained? Then they are representing, they are expecting you to tell whether this configuration is a client level config? Country level config or company code level config? If you are talking about client level. Applicable for. All company codes. Whenever you maintain any configuration at client level. Whenever you maintain any configuration at client level, those configuration, those settings are applicable for all the company codes. For all company codes, whether it is your company code, my company code, it is immaterial. All the company codes will be applied with the same setting because that is a client level configuration. Similarly, when you are talking about country level configuration, applicable for all company codes. In the particular country. In the country. If you maintain any country level configuration for a country, for example, I did a country level configuration for India. All the company codes whoever or whatever is there in your India, these India company codes are by default applied with this configuration. Because it is a country level setting, all the company codes will have country as an assignment. By default, the system will understand in India, how many company codes are there? For all those Indian company codes, it is a one-time setting because it is a country level setting, applicable for all company codes in the country. Applicable for all company codes. In the client here. Now here, applicable for all the company codes in the country. Third one, company code level setting, this is straightforward, applicable for all company codes. Not for all company codes, applicable for. The. Selected company code. Applicable for the selected company code or applicable for the particular company code. This configuration level is also very, very important for you to understand. There are certain things where there is no exception, these are all the points where there is no exception, you cannot tell that you know SAP. You cannot tell that you learnt SAP Fico, but when you say that I learnt SAP Fico, but unfortunately I do not know this, nobody accepts it. There are certain points not acceptable. There are certain points not acceptable, these points will fall under that category. When you tell I know SAP Fico, I did, I learnt SAP Fico, I practiced, I am working as a consultant. These basic, basic things, you cannot say I do not know. Point number one, point number two, you cannot give wrong answers. You have to be very correct or at least you have, you have to be. Relevant to what or at least you have to be close to this point when you are explaining something, it should not be like something completely different. According to you, everything is configuration, but according to SAP, according to a consultant, it is of three types. Blindly do not do any config, understand your configuration is having impact on the client level or on the country level or on the company code level. Accordingly, you need to do it. Anything that is impacting a client level, you should be very careful doing such a setting because all other company codes may get affected. Anything which is at a country level, you need to again look at it because other company codes in that country may be affected. Usually, you would have heard something called legal requirement, statutory requirement, country-specific requirement. Any legal requirement, any statutory requirement, any country-specific requirement is basically country level setting. Is basically country level setting. In short, these are the settings related to two areas majoritively, one is fixed asset, another one is taxation. You know that assets are treated in a different way from country to country. In one country, I may say that I will charge depreciation on straight-line method. On the same asset, in another country, it may be written on value method. On the same asset, in some other country, it may be based on the useful life method. In some other country, units of a production method. Likewise, country to country, if there is a treatment changes in the accounting, those are country-specific configuration. Asset is one option, second option is your taxation. If you take India, in India you have a taxation called as sales tax, purchase tax, which is represented as goods and services tax or GST. Same thing if you take to any other country, let us say US, they do not call it as goods and services tax, instead, they call it as tax jurisdiction. Tax rate in India is different, tax rate in US is different, tax logic in India is different, tax logic in some other country is different. In some countries, there may be no tax, in some countries, there may be high tax. Now these are again country specific. When I say these are country specific, country to country settings are changing, treatment is changing. Such a settings are handled in country level configuration changes, meaning you need to understand what is your requirement. Requirement is nothing but what is your client requirement, what is your business requirement? To meet this requirement, what setting is supposed to be maintained, at what level I need to maintain the config? Is it a client level config, country level config, company code level config? Anything that you are maintaining at client level. Anything that you are maintaining at client level. Since it is applicable for all company codes in the client, whatever the company code that you are working for, you need to do the assignment. Similarly, country level also, you need to do the assignment, company code level, no assignment. Any setting which is maintained at the company code level, no need of any assignment because the setting itself is maintained at company code level. No need to assign it separately. No need to assign it separately, but when a setting is maintained at client level or when a setting is maintained at country level. You need to do additional setting called assignment to company code, if you go top now. If you go top and look at from these settings right from step number one. Here you can see, company, company code is there, there is a setting called assignment to company code. Assign to company code is there, here also, assign to company code is there, here also, assign to company code is there. Here also, assign to company code is here, here also you can see, assign to company code. These are by default company code level setting, that is why there is no assign to here. Document splitting, this is client level setting, we do not do any assignment here, this is assigned to company code by way of your chart of account. Okay? And next one, tax procedure is at a country level. Tax procedure is at a country level, that is why this is assigned to country. Because it is a country level setting, you are assigning it to country, country by default assigns, assigns its to respective company code. It is connected in different logic, you need to understand that logic. Ledgers are again company code specific. Accounting principle is client level, you will be assigning it to your company code. Controlling area is again assigned to company code. Profit center is again at. Controlling area level. Next, integration related setting, this is at a client level, in short, company code level and then controlling area level. If you see, most of the settings are having a term called assign to company code. When we say most of the settings are at company code level, you need to make sure you are creating a setting in a generic way. And then you are assigning it to your company code again separately. Why we are doing all these things slowly, you need to understand, it is not that I know this is setting, I will go to SAP, I will open the screen. I will add a new entry, I will maintain this setting, I will save it, it is okay, you are correct, but not completely correct. Not logically correct, not conceptually correct. You need to understand logically, conceptually, for that to have, you need to understand the things in a different way. Only then you will gain confidence, only then you will feel comfortable, else you are able to do all the settings, but you will not be able to tell why you are doing this setting. Tomorrow, when somebody raises a question, why are you doing like this, you may not be able to answer, provided you have clear understanding of what you are doing. Why you are doing and then how you are doing it in SAP. That is reason, for everything, you need to understand a business requirement scenario. Understand the requirement first, understand the scenario first, with the help of your requirement scenario, it is very easy for you to maintain the configuration in SAP. Otherwise, this will create unnecessary confusion, though you are not finding any difficulty, any problem, any error while practicing. But when it comes to explaining it to the other person, when it comes to understanding a requirement scenario when others are talking. We will find it difficult in understanding or in explaining, in convincing to, to the other person because of this missing point. If you are able to add these missing points, you will not find any difficulties. And right from the beginning, when we are putting our effort to understand conceptually, logically, going forward, there will be no difficulty, no problem to anyone. Alright, what I want everybody to do is, I want everybody to go through these points. Do not by heart anything, just refer one or two times and then leave it. Read at least two times, then leave it, whether you remember it, you do not remember it, it is immaterial. There is no rule, you need to by heart it, you need to know in the same sequence, nothing like that. Just refer, when somebody says baseline configuration, try to remember, try to recollect these points in your mind, that is it. Do not by heart anything, if you by heart, you will not understand anything. Just think that, okay, when we are talking about baseline configuration, these settings are required. If you are able to think these settings from baseline config point of view, it is more than enough. One more point, keep in your mind, in any interview, nobody is going to ask these points. Nobody will ask these points in any interview that you attend. More than ninety plus percentage of the cases, nobody in any interview is going to ask these questions. In case, if anybody is asking, you are the luckiest person. Because you are getting these questions. You are the luckiest person, if you get any question from these areas, because more than ninety percent of the cases, nothing from this is asked in any interview that you attend for SAP Fico. No question from these areas will come because these are all baseline configuration. Everybody will think that you know baseline configuration, without that, how can you come to interview, how can you do your experience, all this kind of a thing. But even though they are asking these questions, it is very simple interview, you are the luckiest person. Being a luckiest person, if you are losing the interview, then you are a bad luck person. Meaning, though it is a very simple thing, you are not supposed to do. Take it easy in SAP, you need to understand because at the end, this is concept. Not a definition, not a T code, not a table, nothing to by heart, it is a concept. If you know the concept, you can talk to anybody at any given point of time. Because nobody is expecting your transaction code, nobody is expecting your definition, nobody is expecting IMG path, nobody is expecting the table. Everybody is expecting whether you know the concept of it or not. If you are able to talk the concept, you are fine. You are talking everything, but you are unable to tell an example, you are not able to tell the logic or concept, you are not trying to convince me or I am not getting convinced with what you are telling. I will tell that, no, I am not convinced, I am not convinced means you are not selected. I am convinced means you are selected. Your selection in the interview is based on my convincing a point. If your interviewer, if I am your interviewer, if you are able to convince me. I am convinced you are selected. If you are not able to convince me or I am not convinced with what you are talking, since I am not convinced, you are not selected. Very simple. At the end, it is not about your understanding, it is about how you are making the other person understand. Tomorrow in the interview, you need to talk and get the job. For you to talk and get the job, somebody should listen and somebody should say, yes, you are correct. It is not that I talk, the other person is listening, he is telling selected. Not going to happen, you need to convince the other person, for convincing, you do not need to talk correct. If you talk related content, if you talk in a. Proper manner, though your answer is incorrect, since you are able to convince, the other person will select you. Logically, you need to think, do not think that I should talk the definition, T code, everything correctly, not required. Not required, if you are able to talk logic, if you are able to talk the process, if you are able to convince them with valid example and all. Other person is automatically convinced, they will give you positive feedback. This is what will happen in any project, in any interview that we join tomorrow. When you know these are the points that the other person is taking a decision, accordingly, you need to put your effort. When you put your efforts accordingly, it will be very good thing or it will give you a positive opinion. Positive feedback for you to gain the knowledge, for you to get proper feedback from your interview, wherever you join, irrespective of the. Feedback, whether you are getting selected, whether you are not getting selected, you will be happy with your performance. That is more important. Make sure that whatever you are talking, you are convinced with yourself, you are happy. Forget about the other person is selecting or not selecting, it is okay. There are so many companies, there are so many opportunities for SAP Fico, it is not that there is only a one company. Think in a broader way, there are thousands of companies. There are thousands of companies in the market, every day, three sixty-five days a year, there are interviews happening for SAP Fico. Do not believe in somebody telling market is currently dry, currently calls are not coming, everybody is asking this, everybody is asking that, ignore it. Keep in your mind for SAP Fico, three sixty-five days a year, there are interviews happening. Do not believe in. Things where somebody is telling currently we are not getting a call, that person may not be getting a call, does not mean you are also not getting a call. He got job, does not mean you will also get the job. When good thing for him is happening, is not happening to you, how come you think bad thing happening to the other person will happen to you? Do not follow bad things, follow the good things. First of all, do not follow anything. Be at your own pace, look at from your profile point of view, look at from your knowledge point of view, do not compare with anything. Do not believe in what and all you hear from SAP Fico from different sources unless you trust the person, do not believe in what they are telling. Unless you trust the person, do not believe in what others are telling, at the end of the day, keep in your mind, they are your competitors. At the end of the day, they are your competitors, they may be telling different things for different reasons, who knows? They may be telling different things for different reasons, nobody knows. I am also learning SAP Fico like you, you are also learning SAP Fico like me, I may be telling I am not understanding anything, but on the other side, I am understanding everything. I have not practiced anything and all, but on the other side, every day I am practicing. To you, I am telling that I am not practicing anything, I may tell that, okay, from next week, we both will sit and practice. But every day I am doing it, to you, I am telling, next week onwards, we will practice everything, you blindly believe me, you not practiced anything, you are waiting for next week to come. Next week, I may tell that, no, I am not finding it interesting and all, I might say any reason. But are you coming and verifying whether really I am practicing, really I am understanding, you know, then why you are following me? At the end, you are my competitor, I am your competitor. At the end, I am your competitor, you are my competitor, keep this point active in your mind always. Until you get the job, keep this point active in your mind that your friends are your competitors. If your friend is telling it's okay, not it's okay, he is not interviewer, right? He is not going to take your interview if he says it is okay, in the interview, my friend told it's okay, even if I do not understand it, do not ask me this question, you cannot say it. You need to understand whom you need to believe, what you need to believe, if blindly whatever is. You need to understand whom you need to believe, what you need to believe, if blindly whatever is coming in the air, you are attracted toward, nobody can help you. If you are blindly believing in, if you are blindly attracted to the different rumors that are coming. Related to SAP FICO. Related to SAP consulting, many rumors will be there in the market. Different people will tell different points. It is on your mindset, it is on your personal opinion, which one are you believing in whom you are trusting? It is all about belief, it is all about trust. If you are attracted to everything that is coming in the air, your knowledge will also be roaming in the air. When you want, you will not be able to find it, you cannot even say that I know this. Because your knowledge, your belief in the air, don't keep it in the air. Don't believe whatever is coming in the market, somebody will tell X reason, somebody will tell Y reason, somebody will tell Z reason, please don't believe in XYZ, believe in your own reason, you have your own theory, you have your own reason. Why you are clear with it, why you are not clear with it, you have a reason. That will get you the job tomorrow, not believing in the other person, somebody will say that currently we are in the month of August. Today this is month and, month and nobody will get calls. Somebody is telling month and you don't get calls, doesn't mean you don't apply for any job. Currently market is dry, I think from September also it is dry, from October we will have job. Somebody is telling this, somebody else is not applying for interview at all, they are sitting idle for one more month to come. I don't know why these people believe in these kind of things. As if they are astrologers or are there, the hardcore followers of their friends or whosever. If you are doing it, you will not get job. Upfront, you do not even have a clarity how to approach to the market, then how do you expect you will get the job? Blindly we are believing in different things, will unnecessarily disturb your mindset, will unnecessarily put negative thoughts in your mindset. Don't allow these things to sit in your mind, don't get distracted because of these points, these are quite common in the market, different people will tell different things. At the end, it is your personal opinion, I don't want to comment on it. But whatever I wanted to tell, I tell, I told, it is purely as I said, you need to decide whom you are trusting, whom you are believing in, accordingly go ahead. Then you will get this access, if you are deviated in between, somebody told you like this, I will do it, somebody else told you like that, I will do it. Nobody knows, you need to follow one. And then put your effort. And then you will see what is happening, you will get what you want. Otherwise, in between you will get deviated, distracted, don't allow these things to come in between. You are now at a learning stage, don't think about anything at this moment until your course is coming towards the end. Your focus is strictly supposed to be on the subject, logic, concept, not on the job market, not on XYZ factors. Hear from left side, leave it from right side, whatever you are hearing about SAP FICO, about job market, about XYZ. You have not completed your course yet, you have not practiced yet, you are not comfortable, you are not confident yet, you are not ready to go to the market now. When you are about to go to the market, things will get changed in the market. At that moment, what is the current market condition, accordingly you prepare your resume, accordingly you tune your mindset, understanding and then go. You just started your learning, you should know where you should focus, where you should think, accordingly put your effort. Don't unnecessarily get distracted, if you find I am talking to somebody or whatever somebody is telling is creating a negative thoughts in me, please stop talking to those people, even though they are your friends. Until your course is completed, don't talk to people who are creating a negative thoughts in, in you. Or if you talk to somebody, somebody is telling a negative things, somebody is talking in a way which you are getting demotivated, please don't listen to them. Don't talk to them, don't ask them for any information, any help. At the end, whatever is creating a negative thought in you, whatever is creating demotivation in you, please don't talk to those people even though they are your friends. Keep them aside until your course is completed, until you get the job. You don't need to talk to somebody who is creating a negative impact in you. No need, strictly not required. You should know that you wanted to become a consultant, follow things and then put your effort properly, you will get the result. As I said, even if they are your friend, if they are not motivating you, if they are not encouraging to you, don't talk to them regarding your course, regarding your learning, regarding your practice, talk to them about everything, movie, XYZ, everything you talk to them. Not about your career, not about your course, not about your practice, not about interview, not about anything related to SAP FICO, skip SAP FICO topic, talk everything with your friends, be as usual. Don't discuss anything related to FICO. Because they may be creating a negative energy in you, they may be demotivating you, they may be giving examples. My friend also learnt SAP FICO, see he did not get any job. There are different reasons why he did not get a job, first of all, you should see whether he got the knowledge or not. He just said one liner, my friend also learnt, he did not get any job, you will also be thinking tomorrow I will also not get a job. Not required. There is no point you to talk these kind of discussions, these kind of points to anybody. Anything related to your job, anything related to interview, any queries related to whatsoever, I am the right person for you to clarify. Don't believe in anybody who you feel that they are creating a negative energy or you are not getting convinced, you are not happy with what others are telling, please don't believe in anything. Alright, this is also equally important during your learning. When I said this is also equally important, if you are getting deviated, distracted here, will create unnecessary problem, you will lose confidence. Don't lose confidence, that is more important. Okay? Fine then, I see many people raised the hands, I will clarify the questions probably in the tomorrow's session. Tomorrow we will connect a little early, maybe ten fifteen minutes, I will clarify the questions and then I will start the session. Alright, fine then, so we will connect at the same time tomorrow morning, as I said, we will connect ten fifteen minutes earlier tomorrow to discuss about the questions, queries, whatever you have. Bye.